I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, in this one with liberty and justice for all.
Look through, uh, who made minutes from last meeting?
This is, I made a motion for June 9th and June 26th.
Thank you. Any corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you very much. Onto resolutions. G C one, resolution authorizing budgetary modification on attorney unallocated insurance.
I'll move it. Second.
First and second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you. G C two, resolution establishing 2019 county equalization rates for towns and cities within Surveille County. First by legislator Valls. Second by legislator Lockwood. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you. On the public safety, P S one, resolution authorizing budgetary modification, E 911, overtime payments.
Over.
I have a first, second by legislator Valls. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you very much. Okay, we have nothing from infrastructure, nothing from the D P this month. Health is, uh, resolution authorizing budgetary modification of department on motor rental. I have a first by legislator Valls. Second by legislator Lockwood. Nope. Just don't have lots of questions on this. Um, there's some language in this contract that put more information on it.
But we can, yeah, we can do that. We've sent the contract back and forth between legal and, um, and enterprise. The health committee approved both the other two resolutions associated with this yesterday. This one is just moving the money within the budget. But if you have specific questions, we will answer them going forward.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry. Human services, resolution authorizing budgetary modification office for the aging unmet needs grant funding. Go ahead. First by legislator Valls, second by legislator Lockwood. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you. Resolution authorizing the creation of one position and deletion of two positions in department of social services. First by legislator Valls, second legislator Valls. Discussion, can you elaborate on this? I'm just curious how you're doing this.
Sure, so you, uh, we had brought a proposal to the table that was actually tabled on April 4th. Really drawing that proposal, uh, we had, uh, some other changes occurred in our shop and we are putting forth a new proposal and, um, we have done our diligence. Julie, uh, about, uh, when I had, um, gave us some feedback and did her due diligence. Um, really good question. And, um, the bottom line is, uh, we are able to decrease our overall budget by $243. That's a county savings of $60 and $75.
Wonderful. Thank you for your work, I appreciate it.
I was just gonna echo chairman said about that. Commend you for taking the back and drawing and bringing back what you did in the explanation were very thorough that I saw in the back end, especially the chart. I don't know what exactly that was, but for a simple man like me, that worked a lot. It worked great for me, so thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you. H S?
What's?
No, go ahead.
This next one, I should add.
Okay. H S four, resolution authorizing the reclassification of one position as part of the social services. Uh, feel free, uh, for, let's, I'll move it. First, second by legislator Lockwood, feel free.
It just, it all dovetails together. Um, we were advised to kind of put it in most separate resolutions, so that's how it's presented.
Very good. And then any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for working out. Okay, um. Julie, you've got vacancy, we do have questions.
Yeah, there's two, uh, one being my 2020 office secretary to the county attorney, um, behind the rest of the signing of, to fill that position. And then the other, so service of senior typist retirement.
So, I understand, because I see it every day, the urgency for the secretary and county attorneys on the 30-day waiver. I'm just trying to figure out the senior typist, uh, how many might be in that category and when we do these 30 days, we're getting rid of 30 days worth of savings that we've been building in. So, that's my only question on that.
Well, you'll actually experience even more savings.
Okay.
Because, um, so middle hygiene is a division called, uh, D S S and Nicole is a director and Margaret is director of community services. Um, when, um, I started three years ago, we were still doing some direct services out of our shop. We had one typist and one senior typist, the senior typist doing all of the bureaucracy, um, filling the blank stuff that is needed to put all of that money into, uh, our communities and distribute it out to private providers. Since we have contracted out, like, a huge supported housing program, we have continued to decrease the staffing there. We no longer have, um, case managers, if you will, it's actually providing direct services to folks. So, we knew this retirement was coming. We don't need a typist and a senior typist any longer in that unit because we don't have all those home calls coming in and out all the time. So, we will be eliminating that typist position, uh, we won't fill it and it just, my understanding is the proper process will be just eliminated from 2020 budget projection. Um, and the person who is in that typist role, um, will be upgraded to that senior typist. She's been training on all those new duties and, uh, and it is a huge bureaucracy, but, uh...
Like I said, I don't see it every day, so I don't know and I appreciate the explanation. I'll make a motion to vote.
First on county attorney, second by legislator Valls. Any more discussion on county attorney? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry, thank you. And, uh, senior typist, I have a first and a second from legislator Lockwood. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Kerry, thank you. Okay. Yeah, that's, uh, Julie, employee assistance program, E P A.
Yeah, uh, that was just, our typist was released, uh, May 24th for the A P. Uh, the most established advisory committee, which is consistent on myself and my kind of administrator now, that's the county administrator, chairman, and also there are, um, four union presidents specifically are involved in the E A P process. Um, so, if you have suggestions, if you'd like to, um, any other members, um, K P also, um, need a, as well.
Just to review your...
Review our P, when our, the deadline is 7/31, the bits to come in and then reviewed, full of that interview and, um, projected to, uh, select at the 9/12, um, that we are on a month-to-month extension.
This way, the...
Correct.
This is more or less just the, uh, yeah, just...
Yeah, this is why, yeah, right.
Changes or additions to the, our community committee issues.
Yeah, good, all right, we're good with that, okay?
Okay. Uh, the next one, uh, we did release for our workers' comp, uh, T P A, um, an R P that was released July 1st, um, and the bits are due August 16th. So, this is also advising that we have a committee, um, as well. Um, so.
Okay.
And that's also seeing for dealing with this and whatnot. The next one we do...
Um, Julie, I'm that committee, though, Zach, Zach, who are working, some members from our workers' count committee that we have, well, next maybe.
Oh, well, I've written out myself and our, um, county administrator, Melissa, the county workers' count chairman, county administrator, and, uh, so, no, if you, yeah...
No, I just wondered, I mean, the chairman's a member of, well, so, that's, that's good.
And then the next one, we are in process of releasing, um, some of our, uh, R P for our county administrator for, you know, pharmacy. So, that we do need to establish a committee, so, I mean, myself, obviously, our kind of administrator, Melissa, who deals with insurance, county administrator, the chairman, um...
Good.
Yeah. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Mr. Berger.
Okay, so, I, um, again, I have a presentation up on the TV. I did mention to the clerk, I'll be more than happy to buy another TV that we can place over there or however we do, so we can all see the social papers. So, I would be more than happy to buy one, even if it's not, we can get it on my...
Can we get them put on our tablets? And everything?
I can do that, too.
So they can sort it through that thing, so we can...
Yep. Okay, so just real quick here, your sales tax...
I like this. I think this is gonna, this is gonna be pretty nice to set this up, thank you.
That's normal guys, but yeah.
I like you.
I think I just need to get a better prescription on my glasses here.
Really, all this is, really, the bullet points, our sales tax dollars, we just received two recently, uh, shot us over our mark, so, you know, it was kinda, as you can see, there's a bunch of negatives coming down through, but the last two actually been very good. People must have come out their homes and kept buying. Uh, capital reserve analysis, this is just your current totals, uh, from the reserves. Um, the original report, the same report, it remains the same, we'll go to fill and audit and it'll also be put on your, um, laptop or whatever you want to, uh, to review it, just as pretty as, just as quick snapshot. O task, um, is the same, that's what's remaining. Uh, reserve bridges, I put a little negative in front of the dollar sign, I just, I gotta get with Steve, um, and Ron and make sure that that clears out itself out. Uh, this is something that, based on what the chairman's state of the county, uh, address did not have, I was, I decided to really do a quick, uh, quick look at our collections and we actually had 3,524 counter transactions and these people coming in to pay, we're 6.4 million hours. It's all broken down by month. Um, I did put the, average is kind of cloudy because obviously, you know, there's some months obviously are very low, other months are very high based on when they're due, but it's 589 transactions per month. There's two people handling this, so it's pretty, pretty good. Express pay, as you know, we went online just recently, um, definitely top of a million dollars, but the interesting thing about the 685, that's about 10% of what we collected, that means 10% of the people that have been, they can pay online. It's still linked. Unfortunately, towns, we're trying to, a lot of towns, you can pay online for current, but we need to get more towns online than current and then, uh, and then the domain we can actually probably do both online. So, like I said, 10% of our walk-ins have been eliminated, hopefully by next year, maybe 25%, well, if we're, if we're online, we'd like to see a lot more than that. Uh, we did do a working, workers', uh, compensation meeting, it's always a pleasure to sit through those, we're, um, and, um, I just threw a question out there, how much is the cash reserve for open working cop planes? Uh, the report was given to us this month, so I thought I'd bring it to you. And I was just, one thing is, do you think, you know, in your mind, do you think it's a million dollars of reserves? Two million? 10 million? 17 million? So, what's, what does that mean? That is not in our budget, that's not something that, it's not fully funded, it's funded at about 3.4 million, but that fluctuates based on, they can settle cases, back, you know, and stuff like that. The big key to that 17 million doesn't concern me as much as, um, the, the people that go out of the claims, we lose them, we lose their payroll, uh, there's a backside negative, so they have to fill their seats for four weeks, eight weeks, whatever it might be. And, um, you know, if you look at every claim, it's, well, you're looking at about 15,000 dollars. When we get there, some are dollars, some are millions. Um, it's gotta be eye-opening to understand for department heads, how, how we have to try to figure out how to correct it for better, the situation for employees. I don't think any employee comes in saying, "I'm gonna get hurt today so I can have the summer off." Well, I don't think any department says, "I hope that somebody can play today," and is that true? So, it's up to, uh, up to us and the department heads to hopefully try to figure out what the leading causes are, which we have, and how we go about trying to rectify, at least get that number down, so it doesn't hurt us on the backside with people needing, being up for eight weeks and then we can't fill that position because we're, we're out. Uh, so this time, the leading cause, just another thing, leading cause of workers' comp claims, slips and falls, something we do every day, almost every, maybe once an hour, if not more, we want. And slips and falls in this county are the leading indicator. So, how we approach that, it's up to the committee, but you can look at the top three issues and deal with department heads and see how we can reduce some of it. You bury your heads, the number's gonna be 20, next year, 20,000.
Is that, is that for the total item that we have? So, that's for the towns that are involved?
That'd be, that would be 316, there's only, I say only 316, that equates to that 17 months. That's if we had to cash out today.
Right. But then, that's not just county employees.
No, no, that's, that's everybody.
Exactly. Workers' comp is paid until death, if there's a permanent claim, uh, you know, if it's a temporary or partial claim that scheduled plus use, that may be a lump sum payment. So, those reserves, uh, some of those reserves are based on life expectancy, uh, and the runout with average weekly payments and medical, stuff like that, and others are scheduled losses of use, or like loss of a finger, X amount of dollars, it's paid. So, uh, they do vary, people get better or, or not, or die, they can go up and down. That's, that's not paid in one year, the treasure is posted, uh, it's paid out for the lifetime of the claim, so each claim has a reserve, this is the aggregate of all those reserves for outstanding liabilities right now, uh, as, as the T P A is determined. And the claims committee does a good job of looking at changing reserve levels, higher or lower, as, as things progress. It's an executive session type session.
Right. They actually came up with their savings, you know, they presented 400,000 more savings and trying to close cases, two different things to initiate, so, um, you know, so it's worked, but just something to think about.
And we do get some reimbursement on some claims towards this, but...
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay?
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll do a little executive session next, the end of meeting next month, and we'll have a little, we can hit Richard.
Little tidbits that I come up with.
No, it's good, it's, it's a good conversation.
You know, when it's paid mileage is hard idea, a little puppy right now, it's, uh, some, as we review, Mewness is an awesome tool and a lot of ways before the top 10 people that, that give mileage, top 10, and, uh, you're paying a pretty substantial amount. And on top of them, probably around 6,000, 4,000, 3,000 per, so, you know, last year's take on, on one was 516,000. So, how do you, how do you combat that? That's, that's, we're less centers for, whether you get, throw vehicles, but if you don't have somebody watching this, we're trying to, we're trying to decide where the breakout point is, is it 2,000? Is it a thousand dollars, you know, a month? Paying somebody a thousand dollars a month, I'm sorry, that's not the smart business. Um, but if you pay them 500 for 250 a month, probably not a bad situation, but somebody has to look at that.
You're absolutely right. One of the, uh, I know the health department has a formula for like, they calculate the break, breaking point of paying mileage because they have cars instead. Uh, and, uh, the last time I saw there was about 12,000 miles, employees driving more than 12,000, it's working them, carrying different car, so, one of the areas I've, you know, in space that I've had this discussion, we've got these people that assess and drive a lot, is it more economical to calculate to have a D S S vehicle, plus it's safer if you're not relying, uh, that could reduce our liability and our risk if you don't have D S S employees transporting clients and children in their personal lives.
Right. Yes, it's just interesting to see that, plus nowadays, everything, as you can see, we're on computer now. I mean, you have an app that you can hit a button, when you get in that car, then it will follow the rule back and then it'll just print it out after you're done for the day and you don't have to record on a pen and piece of paper where you went, when you stopped for allocation of, of mileage. There's ways now that can be a lot more efficient and dependable. And so, I just, that's why I just, it's one of those things that came up, um, that you really, whether you're a lease it, whether you have, you have a fleet manager, you have somebody that's doing a lot of miles in a year, in one department, you move that car next year into another department, it doesn't mean a lot of miles, you can really pull it out. So, it's very common, but you need a, you need a point person to, to pretty much do this, you move it into the 20th century.
Thank you.
And, uh, I think we're...
Thank you. Go. That's what I...
Yeah, I have, uh, two things. One is a mid-year budget report that I passed out to you. Um, I think you've seen these before, it's at the quarter, you know, the dark, uh, the dark bands, horizontal bands of the code for each department, the law that we're by the budgetary divisions within that department. Uh, what we're looking at in the far right column, what you're looking at in the far right column is the amount, uh, this is an expenditure report, the amount or the percentage spent so far this year. And then the bottom of the first page, I wrote in 58.6%. That's, uh, how much of the year has passed as of July 2nd. So, you can look and see how each department is doing, uh, keeping in mind some of them have earlier seasonal expenses, so they may look above that 58, uh, but by the end of the year, it comes back down. Good news is, overall, on the last page, you go to the last line, uh, although we're at 58% of the year passed, 44% of the budget that is spent, some of that is due to wagon billing, but, but having that, uh, having that wider percentage shows that our departments aren't just taking the budget and spending it, they're being conservative in the expense of budgets. So, I think that'll go. Second item I had to report is I'm working on a report that you'll get next month, uh, that is going to estimate, uh, cost increases in the 2020 budget, uh, based on actions that have been taken this year so far, so that, and plus to any reductions as well, so you'll know what we're looking at going into the budget season. Departments will be receiving their budget packets, uh, beginning of August as usual, will be due back to me, uh, beginning of September, we start our one-on-one meetings to eventually produce a budget, track budget quality and hope this year should go smoother so we have one year under, clear our belt of nerves.
Thank you. Human resources, maybe to report, food counts, labor absences.
My report is not as, uh, ribbonase, Kevin.
What's your problem?
But basically...
Is it up on the board yet?
I just need a PowerPoint, you know, I need all that. I'll, I'll, uh, step up next one, but, um, you know, just to report, we have, uh, as of 6/21, 32 main positions down thirteen from last month, um, and to include the current savings to date, seller savings with print, less the annual leave and payoffs, is, uh, savings to date is 1,163,963 dollars and 16 cents. Uh, there's a breakdown of part-time positions reporting in there, the total count of employees employed at the moment now, and this is up from last month because of, uh, the seasonal, um, is included and there's 1,146 included, about 100, we're getting about 1,146, so. And then there's also the exams that are here scheduled as of now and, um, people are waiting for results on, and it has been updated at our website, so continue to push our exams out there to...
How do you, how do you, hmm, how do you get the exam notices out there? I mean, I know, I know there's a few avenues, but to you, just a quick brief on where they're at, again, as usual.
The exam notices we have, uh, now they go to all county employees that have, uh, email access and then it's on our website. We also have, uh, probably close to 200 outside agencies that the, it goes by email as well, so, um, it's posted in the local papers, um, in a minimal post, so basically it's all pre-enterprising, we do it by email, posting on free website and...
Thank you.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
It's, uh, the new website is going to allow young people to go in and not have to print and send a check or a money order. Um, I believe that's really gonna ramp up an ability to attract folks to take some...
I totally agree with you.
And I just wanted to commend Julie because, uh, it's no secret how difficult it is to recruit and keep caseworkers. And, uh, we've already, it's almost exhausted, the current list, uh, we weren't scheduled to give another, uh, exam until October, I think it was, and when I let Julie know that, she immediately just, uh, took the reins, scheduled an earlier, uh, testing cycle and has gotten us into four times a year, even though that's a lot more work for them because within the six months, they get the same test. So, there's some tricks to all of that, um, which is their expertise, not mine, but bravo and thank you so much, Julie, that was, really being a champion for D S S, I appreciate it.
Very good.
I have a question. And I don't need to answer right now today, but since we've had this family medical leave in 2011 place, have these numbers really skyrocketed? I don't need an answer right now today, but since we've had this family medical leave in twenty-place, uh, have these numbers really skyrocketed?
I, I have to look.
Well, and that, that's not true, I'm looking for you, but I'm just curious, you know, that what the place was a year ago or two years.
The reporting on that?
No, um, at the state level, you know, what the place banned off, we didn't really do that. So, I just didn't know if that's.
I think it's always.
It's different than the federal, F and L A, which we've had for many, many years.
Yeah.
But then it ran for a reason, it seems like we have to make that.
I don't know how that would, uh, they would know any impact on that if they go in differently, but.
Yeah.
Something for you to look.
I don't know, I just curious on that.
Yeah. I don't know if it has much changed.
I'd like to ask you, for death benefits, for example, if a family member passes away, what kind of length of time can our employees take off?
There's a contract conditions with bereavement leave, um, that they get up to three days, depending on the contract and depending on the family member with immediate, um, step in law relations, so, um, but they also can use their time as well.
They can use their time.
Annual leave, yep.
So, they're not getting the family medical leave that you can take like six weeks or eight.
It depends, I guess, under those certain, certain circumstances, if there's, if they.
I guess that's what I'm asking.
They are like medically needing help to deal with that, then it depends, it's.
It's not death, it's the person or their ill.
Yeah. Right.
Time they have to, yeah.
I've talked about some, you know, tragedies.
The agreement standard, uh, time off on, like, most contracts, I believe, is three days.
Three days, yeah.
Yeah, three days.
Oh, you know, again, if you have a C S E A contract, um, because we've experienced this in our shop, um, it provides up to a one-year leave of absence, and it is right in the contract. So, uh, we had to provide the twelve weeks F and L A and then the one year. And then if they're not ready to come back after one year, um, they're terminated by Martin, Julie, help me on this. And they, they have up to four years, is it?
If they have permanent status, they have to, for, for, that's up to four years.
There's a big, they have to be, they're being on stage, I need to take that position.
But the leave of absence could be taking other employment, uh, and say, I'm gonna go take a job at the college, but I might go on leave of absence, the department doesn't have to grant that. And say, if I don't like, I don't wanna come back, you know, maybe say, no, we're not granting you leave of absence, or maybe I might, you know, back back around, you know, Montana, that type of thing.
Is that what you're gonna do?
No.
Well, in many cases, it's a tragedy or anything like that, certainly.
Yeah.
But the, I think that's also a big point in recruiting people as it is coming to right now. It's up to recruit people, but the amount of stuff we have, it's people don't realize they can use. It's, I think it's a big recruitment type situation. Hopefully you don't have to use it in many cases. I mean, while I'm talking, I'll just make a comment, a friend of ours, mine, Mr. Proud, is now still at Sonica Hill. We're trying to get him to stand up and balance. When I say we, I told him I'm dancing when he can do that.
Yeah.
Uh, but he's, he's, he's done well mentally, physically, pretty good, except he's gotta get up and balance himself before he go home. So, he's at a point now, he comes into Oswego for more therapy because therapy at Sonica Hill goes to a point, then it can become just a resident. And then they send him up here to do that, so that's where he, where he's at at this point, where, because I've had a number of people ask me, and hopefully in the future, he'll be old.
We put in our missing these reports, thank you for keeping us up to date on that. Any other, uh, advice reports or missing these reports that we need to go over? Motion to adjourn, by legislator Walbert, second by legislator, I am all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed?